I'd like to call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. I'd like to call on Mr. Jimmy Rogers, if you would, to lead us in our invocation immediately, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
Let us pray. Most kind grace heavenly father, again, as we approach the beginning of a new school year, when the children are filling our halls with joy and laughter, and getting acquainted with their new teachers in a new school year of instruction, teaching, and learning. Lord, we pray that this board helps make the best decisions that affect these children, that can help them grow in their every needs. Lord, we thank you for the community involvement, for those in our communities, for those organizations in our communities, for the safety that we're trying to present in our communities, for all the help that everyone gives to offer to help make this the best education county that we can possibly be. Lord, we pray that you guide us and direct us in all these decisions, and, Lord, we pray that we always keep you first in our lives and in our daily walks with you. Lord, we give you the praise and the glory for all these things. Are we asking thy name? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We have several announcements this evening. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be held September 9th, 2013, here at the EC, but we also have the need to have a call board meeting Monday night, August 19th, specifically for some personnel. With school getting ready to start, we're going to meet to make sure we have people in the right places, in the right schools, et cetera, et cetera, fill in those positions. So, August 19th at 7:00 PM, is that okay with everybody? You want to do 6? 6, okay. We'll meet August 19th at 6:00 PM, here at the EC. I'd also like to announce that we do have an opening on our board from the Beaver Dam District. We'll be accepting application. All you need to do, if you're interested, is to send us a resume, and then the board will schedule with you an appointment to where the board can interview, and then make a decision on who will fill the open seat for the Beaver Dam District. And we will be taking those applications up until one week prior to September 9th, which would be the second, which would be Labor Day, so let's make it the third. September the 3rd deadline on application for the open board seat. We also have the North Carolina School Board Association Conference, annual conference coming up November 18th through the 20th. Please make Ms. Moody aware of your plans. If you plan on attending this important meeting, we can get continuing education credits. It's an excellent time to network with other board members across the state, and also an opportunity to meet some folks even from across the nation. The North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference is well-attended. We also have our District 8 meeting, September 26th, to be held in Rutherford County. I don't know the exact school yet, but whenever I get that information, I will forward it to each of you.
What was that date, Chuck?
September the 26th, and that'll be an evening meeting, and we have ridden together in the past. If you want to arrange to ride together, if you need to go individually, that's okay too. But that's September the 26th down in Rutherford County this year. I'd also like to say a great big thank you from Haywood County Schools, and also from the Haywood County Board of Education, to all the churches that were involved in the August 3rd Day of Caring. What a wonderful outpouring of work, sweat, labor, volunteer time. Our churches have been very involved in our school system. We appreciate the many hours that are dedicated. I know that the maintenance department appreciates it because it does help to get caught up on a lot of things, and a lot of man-hours, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And we will be recognizing those churches at another board meeting, but I did want to say, I had great turnout, and I know the superintendent was around to all the schools. We also had a tremendous amount of books and all that were donated through Altrusa, that was coordinated through Altrusa. Unbelievable amount of school supplies that were donated, and again, thanks to everyone that helped with that. I appreciate it. Let's see, there was another announcement. Contrary to what's been on Facebook and Twitter and everything, the Bethel Middle School, we have an update from our superintendent on the Bethel Middle School football team. Dr. Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I received a text message from Sean Paris, who is our new principal at Bethel Middle School, at 5:13 this afternoon, and it was an update on the football team. As of now, we have 19 boys plus one girl for a total of 20 players at Bethel Middle School, so we will have to tell them.
I know there was a lot of concern in that area, and a lot of folks had some misconceptions, but I think now that it's settled that we will be fielding a team from Bethel Middle School, and we wish them a lot of success. We sure do. Good luck and success. Any other announcements that need to be made this evening? Under agenda adjustments, I just have one. Jim Francis will not be here this evening, so Lynn Milner will be acting finance chair this evening, and she'll do our financial reports. Are any other agenda adjustments? Okay. I would also like to recognize a couple of folks that are here tonight. We have two former school board members with us this night, and I'd like to recognize Ann Barrett, a former board member who's with us tonight. Thank you, Ann, for being with us. Mr. Walt Leatherwood is with us tonight. Thank you for coming, Walt. Next on our agenda is, we have an update from our sheriff, Mr. Sheriff Christopher. Board, recognize you, Mr. Christopher. I'm saying Mr. Christopher, it's Greg domain.
You just keep calling me Greg.
No. Sheriff Christopher.
That's good. Mr. Chairman, Board, Dr. Garrett, thank you very much for allowing me to come this evening and speak with you just a few minutes about our Safe School Plan, and especially for a couple of our outlying schools that does not have an SRO at this time, and that is Bethel Elementary and Riverbend Elementary. School safety is paramount to the sheriff's office, and as the sheriff of Haywood County, I've been tasked with looking at different ways in order to make our schools safer to include the staff. Because of not having additional personnel to staff our schools as school resource officers as originally requested, we have formulated a plan to reach out to the most outlying schools. This plan includes requesting the school board to allow the sheriff's office to utilize the following resources. I would like to have an administrative office for the sheriff's office personnel at Bethel Elementary and at Riverbend Elementary. This office would be used by sheriff's office personnel on a 24-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week basis. This office would not be open to the public unless a citizen has scheduled an appointment with the sheriff's office prior to. The office at Bethel Elementary, which would be used by me personally as my duty office one day a week, I would conduct my daily business there, and also on the premises to provide security at the schools as an SRO. The plan also includes Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes, our patrol captain, and our patrol lieutenant, a day a week each at that office as well, to do whatever needs to be done in a way of maybe a scheduled appointment, or to do their administrative office work there, plus work as an SRO. Deputies assigned to work in the zones that include Bethel Elementary and Riverbend Elementary would be utilizing the office space as well to complete reports, return phone calls, or other job-related functions while providing a higher level of visibility and security that is not there now. This administrative office would not be used for 911 or emergency problem reporting or problem solving, and it would not be open just to the general public to walk in off the street. Neither of these schools currently have an SRO. I'm very thankful for the strong partnership that exists between the Haywood County Public School System and the sheriff's office. I appreciate the members of our school board for their service, and for the schools, and for their teachers, and what they do for each one of our students in this county. It's my intention to continue to strengthen our professional relationship as we work together to provide and improve school safety. Do you have any questions?
Do I have any questions? I think this is a great opportunity for both the sheriff's office and our school system to accommodate this.
I think so as well, and the reason being, we tried to pick the two schools that had the longest response time if there was an emergency, and this is just a way for us to do our very best to provide what we can in a way of safety for the students and for the staff at these schools. And it would be another sheriff's office car parked out front, it would be personnel coming in and out, and I think it would just be good for us as well as for the school system.
Dr. Garrett, did you have anything you'd like to add, or?
The only thing I would like to add is, it's a good partnership, like the sheriff said, between Haywood County Schools and then with the sheriff's office, of course. They have been most receptive to all of our needs, and we certainly appreciate this opportunity, so thank you.
And I'm sure the facilities are available for them.
They are. I've spoken with both principals, and it is available.
I figured that would be something that would not be a handicap, that is something that would hold us up in doing this. Now, do we need to make a motion or anything such as that?
I would like to recommend that you make a motion for approval.
Okay. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, board members. I'd entertain a motion that we accept the generous offer from the sheriff's office in joint relationship here with Haywood County Schools. You want to make the motion, or?
I'll make the motion that we accept it.
Mr. Rogers, Ms. Milner's made a motion. Mr. Rogers has seconded it. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'd just like to say one thing. I think it's a great thing, but I know we had some questions. I'm going to look at my board attorney. Have we?
We did, Mr. Patrick, and we met with the sheriff last Monday, and we made some changes in the plan, but I think everything is fine.
It's fine, okay.
I have no problem recommending it, the changes that were made. The plan that the sheriff presented tonight is a revision of the original plan.
That's why, that's why I thought.
Any other questions, comments?
It's a great thing.
There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Now's the time I'd like to recognize Mr. Rick Stiles to address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nellie. I think that's a great opportunity with the sheriff. I see bus drivers, disciplined on the bus, is what I see, maybe some of these guys, making them stay in those seats, so extra drivers. I think that's a great idea. Now, I'm here tonight with a couple of our guys from transportation, if they'll come on up. I'd like to read this letter. Each year, we have our buses inspected. The guys do it monthly, and then once a year, we have an inspector from DPI, Mr. Randy Hinson. This is a letter to Dr. Garrett. "Dr. Garrett, I visited your county on December 17th to conduct the annual review of your bus, school bus maintenance program. This review included inspection of school buses and the analysis of some very key bus maintenance data contained in statewide maintenance program. Attached to this letter, you will find a detailed report of the findings of this review. This review is conducted as a service of DPI to provide you, the superintendent, with feedback on the status of our school bus fleet. And please note that the physical inspection of each bus includes a review of safety and operational conditions and usage. It is the responsibility of the bus driver and the maintenance department to inspect these buses monthly according to the state statutes. Each bus must be inspected every 30 calendar days, as required by the State Board of Education. Details on the program can be found at the school bus safety website. During my review, I randomly inspected eight buses, which is roughly 10% of your fleet. The 2012-2013 inspection score for Haywood County was 6.12. This score is provided as a benefit to track improvement from year to year. The lower the score indicates fewer defects found during the inspection. You could have received a zero, which would have been a perfect score. We did on certain buses, but it averaged out to 6.12. The inspection score from the previous year was 7.62, which was great, but we even improved on that. Then, the average score for the Western District, which is 33 counties, was 29.58. So, Haywood ranked way up there, and we're very proud of our guys, and we did get two of them here this afternoon, tonight. The rest of them were a little bit shy, but it is a team effort. It takes all of us. It takes from the man who fuels the buses to these guys who go out and work on them, and the guys in the shop. And it's a great honor to receive this award for Haywood County. We're very proud of the job that Haywood County does, and our philosophy is that education begins with transportation. And we're very proud of these guys. It takes a team.
Jack, show us their banner. Yay.
This will be posted at the garage, and this is actually the third one in the last five years. We've never won this. We've tried and tried for a lot of years, and the past five years, the guys have just come together and done a great job.
I'd like to present you with a certificate now. This is to our entire department, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Annual School Transportation Inspection Award 2012-2013, certificate of recognition presented to Haywood County Schools Transportation Department. The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere congratulations for your hard work, dedication, and achievement. First-placed Western Region. And then in addition, I have a certificate for each of our employees. The first is presented to Mr. Rick Stiles, who is our director. Congratulations, Rick. Mary Jo Reese, who could not be with us tonight. Gloria Green. John Green. Keith Inman. Lee Williams. Lee Trantham. Sam McElroy. A.C. Sprinkle. Keith West. Jack Campbell. Thank you, Jack. And Brandon Price. Again, congratulations to each of you.
Thank you.
That's it. If you'd only know. All right, one, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Dr. Ann Garrett, would you join me up here, please, at the podium? I'm going to read this so I don't get it wrong, because this is a very important award. "Dr. Ann Garrett, Superintendent of Haywood County Schools, has been named the Region 8 Superintendent of the Year. This honor includes a nomination as a candidate for the 2014 A. Craig Phillips North Carolina Superintendent of the Year Award. The nomination is highly recognized commendation for her work and accomplishments for Haywood County Schools. The North Carolina Superintendent of the Year will be announced at the North Carolina School Boards Association Conference in Greensboro on November 12th, 2013. The state winner will go on to the competition, the national award to be offered by the American Association of School Administrators." On behalf of the Haywood County Board of Education, I'd also like to present to you, this certificate of recognition presented to Dr. Ann Garrett. The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere congratulations for being named Region 8 Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations.
Well, it's truly an honor to have this nomination, and, you know, like I have said before, I'm just very fortunate to work in Haywood County and to live in Haywood County and to work with such outstanding people, such as yourself. Thank you, board, for your support throughout the years, our public, our community. I have the best job in the world, so thank you.
It was on behalf of the board.
Thank you, board.
I'm trying to remember if I had something else that I need to be down there for before I walk back up here, because I have done that before, so. Again, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you in Greensboro in November. I know you'll do well. Ms. Moody, has anyone signed up to address the board this evening? I believe we have three folks, okay. First, I'll read this statement, then we'll call you to the podium. "Now's the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel." First, the board would like to recognize Ms. Jeanne Paris. Ms. Paris?
Dr. Garrett, Board of Education, thank you for this opportunity to say a few words about our drug program. We're coming up in the world. We have flyers now, and everybody has one at their seat, and if you don't, I have some more. Also, what I came here tonight to tell you about is, if you're, this is in conjunction with Greg, and if you're working with Greg and Bill Hollinshead, it's all about God, it's all about prayer, and it's all about work. And I don't know, maybe work is the hardest part, because there's a lot going on in our community, and Greg has made so many changes in this community that I can't keep up with him. And we are so proud of what he has done and how much he has added to this community. One of the big things that we're going to be doing with our drug program, we're going to have a fun day, a prayer day, and a fun day. What we want is that each church in the community, in this county, and tomorrow, we're sending out 140 letters to 140 churches, same letter that each of you have. And this letter is asking the people to gather at their church at 12:00 noon on Saturday, September 28th, in prayer, to pray for their church and the issues in their church. Then, we want them to move on to the center of their community, whatever they figure out. In Canton, it'll be the town hall. Maggie, it'll be town hall. Waynesville, it'll be the courthouse. But whatever, we want you to move to the center of your community and pray for your community. We want you to pray for our children, our schools. We want you to pray that something will be improving about the drug business, and I can tell you that that's already happening. And we want to pray for any other issues that the community has, and then we want to move from that community center to Waynesville, to the, right, the street that goes down beside the First Baptist Church. We're going to line up, we're going to walk through Waynesville to the courthouse, and pray at the courthouse for the whole county. And then, once the walk is completed, and we're not quite sure about the route, we hope to go to Frog Level and pray in Frog Level, and we might also go down to Mount Olive, but we're still waiting to make those decisions, because especially that Mount Olive walk is a little tough. And we are, for those of you like me who can't walk all that distance, we're going to have a sheriff's bus to take us along behind the walk and pretend we're walking. So.
It's the thought that counts.
That's right, if you're there. That's what counts, is being there. And from there, we're going to Long Chapel. Should arrive there about 3:00. We're going to have contemporary Christian music, so this is going to be kind of like an old-timey gospel singing, except it's going to be different kinds of music, and we may have some gospel music also. But it's going to be a fun time, and at 4:30, we're going to have barbecue. Now, to get barbecue tickets, we're going to announce them. I'm not sure of this yet, because we haven't confirmed this was Long Chapel, but Long Chapel is providing the site for the fun and the music, and all the things that go along with doing that kind of work, which they're very good at. And the barbecue is going to be $8 a plate, and it's going to be done by Backyard Barbecue, and we hope that you will go by Long Chapel and buy a ticket at some time closer to the event that will be announced, because we won't know how much food to buy, and we'll have to pay for it. And Greg told me he couldn't pay that much for all that food. He's got too, he's got too many kids in college. But thank you for this opportunity to tell you about this event, and hope that you'll support it, and that you'll be there, and have fun. And we're going to invite all the politicians that we know, so that we will have good support from politicians, and the only one I know so far is Michelle Presnel is planning to be there. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Paris. Thank you. Ms. Tia Lambert.
Thank you. I'll start writing, because I know we only have three minutes. I'm going to speak tonight on Haywood County Schools' indoor air quality and what is best practice. The primary goal of any school board is to enact written policies to direct and support clear, consistent, and effective practices, with the expectation that practices will evolve and be improved based on new information and experience. It is within the spirit of this idea that I speak tonight. It is within the spirit of this idea that I speak tonight on the issue of indoor air quality in Haywood County Schools. This past fall, my child's school underwent what I was told was routine maintenance repairs. Trees were cut, weeds consistently sprayed, debris moved, roof repaired, and year-long school-wide painting inside and out. Normally, these repairs would be considered typical and tolerable for most, but for the growing number of children and adults with asthma and allergies, especially in Haywood County, it was anything but tolerable. Painting projects took place consistently over a series of days, weeks, and months, using materials and supplies with documented carcinogenic effects. These projects took place during regular school hours during the cold winter months while both students and staff were present. This time also includes the days set aside for countywide benchmark testing. These projects are documented by both a paper trail and with witnesses. No laws were broken, and Haywood County Schools operated within minimum state guidelines, but I do question the administrative decision-making process that decides to commercially paint as well as complete routine paint maintenance during school hours when students and staff are present. And my question to the Board and to the school-based administrator is, is this how we care for our children? Is this how we create an environment that is most conducive to learning and achieving academic success? And is this Haywood County Schools' ideas of best practice? And I operate under the idea of best practice as being a method, technique, or set of guidelines, ethics, or ideas that represent the most efficient or prudent course of action that has consistently shown results superior to those achieved with other means and that is used as a benchmark. Reducing... I feel reducing exposure to asthma and allergen triggers is a school's responsibility. I feel enforcing poli... Policies to help prevent life-threatening events and to keep students and staff with sensitivities free of symptoms and better able to carry out their academic functions should be of highest priority. And I just feel like we should work together to try to create a safe environment for both our students and our staff members, and especially in Haywood County, who has a... Which has a very high asthma and allergy rate and incident, and, um, I just figure it's hard enough to be a teacher these days with... Without not being able to breathe, so that's that.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Your concerns will be addressed, and we'll be back in touch with you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lynn Hodge. Sorry. It's clear as day. Especially when you look at my writing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I just wanted to come up. I'm not a public speaker, so... But the fee schedule, which the Board has under review right now for facilities use, and this time with national obesity so bad and, uh, tight budgets, both for the Board, school system, and for all the community people, the fee schedule, when you first look at it online, the dollar figures don't look exorbitant by any mean, shape, or fashion, but when you take into an 11, 12-week basketball season, uh, two gyms with practices, when you start adding all the small fees together, it turns into a rather large sum. All the youth organizations... I'm a board member at Bethel, so I can speak for Bethel's. You know, we're all nonprofit, nobody's paid, we're out there for the kids' sake, um, and our fee that we charge more or less covers the insurance to cover the kids. With the fees, if they go into effect the way they're on the website right now, it would, in my feeling, be very detrimental to most of the youth boards across the county. I'd just like for the Board to take a real good, hard look. We're all for having a set fee across the board, every youth organization pays the same, but at the same time, it can't be to where it shuts the youth organizations down. And with the fee schedule it is right now, that's online, it would be extremely hard for our organization to be able to continue to be an organization and keep basketball and football alive and well. So, just like, appreciate everything the Board does, and just, if you could take a real good, hard look at the numbers.
Ms. Hodge, I appreciate your comments, and I will respond to a certain degree on that. This Board has asked our administration to move very slowly and carefully on this issue, and normally, we would be voting on this tonight.
That's what I...
So, we've... We've held off, we're gonna look at it and study it. We... Our business is not to put anybody out of business.
Appreciate it.
And so, we're looking at it and seeing what we can do to make sure it's something that everybody can live with, including ourselves, uh, 'cause we have facility upkeep costs, too, as you've recognized it.
Light bills.
But anyway, I sure appreciate your comments, and we're gonna move very slowly and carefully on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can I make one, Tommy?
Sure.
Or just one suggestion? I know it's been talked, I don't know whether it has... I mean, have we talked to some of the youth? Have we tried to set up a, I guess, a meeting with... With each youth, or even on the Waynesville side, meet with all the Waynesville, Lake Generaluska, so on and so on, then on the Canton side, meet with Canton, Bethel, sort of talk to them and ask them what their needs are? I mean, let them...
We have not met with every organization. We have met with some individuals. The fee schedule that we calculated was to pay the cost of turning on the lights and turning on the heat. There are some costs, like field rental, which obviously you don't turn on lights and heat, that we can look at, and there is some difference between the old nonprofit scale and the new nonprofit scale, but there's not a lot. But we... We are very, very sensitive to the fact that these are very good longstanding organizations that help our children, so that's why we certainly wanna move very, very slowly. The balance is, do we take any taxpayers' money and use it to support a non-school organization versus how do we make sure the community really gets access to the facilities that the community, in a sense, owns? And that's a tough, tough balance. I think we just need to move very slowly and make sure we can pay the light bills, but at the same time, not, um, not supplant... Not use taxpayer dollars to support non-school organizations.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you all for your input this evening. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the July 15th closed-in regular session minutes, the July 20th called-in closed session minutes. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion that they be approved as presented. Mr. Kirkpatrick's made a motion, I hear a second. Ms. Shandival's made the second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, the Board members... Uh, Board will recognize Mr. Pat Smathers, our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, uh, the matter before you tonight is to declare a portion of the Tuscaloosa campus as surplus property. If you recall, this is the piece right down, uh... It... The only school matter is roughly with a Tuscaloosa sign is at this point in time. There's a corner there, right at the intersection, that we've previously discussed, uh, before. There is an easement going over that property, uh, which affects its use. Uh, there is some interest in that property, and a bit... The procedure we have to follow is that, uh, the Board declared that surplus. We've had it appraised. The tract that was appraised came in at $100,000. So, the procedure, uh, to move on this property is that you all will have to declare a surplus. We will, uh, give the first opportunity to the county commissioners by law. We have to offer it to... Once you declare a surplus, we have to offer it to the county commissioners, and then, if they wanna buy it at $100,000, it's theirs. If they decline to accept the, uh... To pay $100,000, uh, or there's not any of the further negotiation, then we continue on to sell that property to, uh, at the best price we can.
This time, we entertain a motion that we approve the, uh, piece of property at the bottom of Tuscaloosa Hill as surplus property. Is that the way I should say it?
Uh, that's the way, Your Honor. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will...
The lawyer came out.
That's right.
I'm not a judge yet.
I've been saying that in three different courts today, Your Honor. The, uh, two in Haywood and one in Bunkin County, so I'm primed today, but the, uh... Mr. Chairman, I will do a formal description and...
Okay.
Put that with a written resolution to the...
But we just need to approve the surplus, as being surplus.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the surplus property at Tuscaloosa Hill.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner. We've got a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, second from Ms. Milner, to declare a piece of property surplus up at Tuscaloosa.
And I thank the jury for your deliberation.
Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. It was pointed out in the previous, um, motion that I said July the 20th. That needs to be corrected to July 30th. I just looked at it wrong on my thing, so... For the record, it was July the 30th, uh, minutes, okay? Just to clarify that. Now, the Board would recognize Ms. Jenny Wood.
Thank you. I just wanna preface this by saying Fred is not here to answer questions, so try to keep her questions to him in him. I'm teasing. This is my...
Be nice to the rookie.
That's right. This is my first calendar. For your approval tonight, we are asking for the revised calendar, 2013-14 school calendar, to include the five bonus annual leave days, and you can see that that would take the place of the first normal five, regular five annual leave days. So, that is the only change for your approval tonight.
At this time, we entertain a motion that we approve the 2013-2014 calendar revisions as presented.
So, move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Be nice, be nice.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. You're halfway there.
Thank you. Next, um, I need your approval to send the calendar waiver request for weather-related causes for the 2014-2015 calendar year, school calendar year.
I make a motion that we approve this, uh, waiver that we send off every year for the last ever so many years, how long it's been.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the waiver request by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Sir.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
How many waivers have we gotten in the past five years?
Every year.
Everyone.
Have we been fortunate to get a waiver every year? Great.
Well, it's pretty well in statute that you can pretty well get it if you have the right formula. I mean, it's so many missed days, you're gonna get it pretty well. It's almost a...
I think we've been asking for it since 2003, if I'm reading this right. 2003, 2004 school year. I mean, we've been asking it, yeah.
And that's probably because that's whenever the law that limited us went into effect.
And we've got it every year. I don't think we've ever been denied.
Any questions or discussion? Any further questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Next on the agenda, we have the opportunity to recognize, uh, at the North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Conference, to be listed as an honor roll, uh, certificate of businesses and nonprofits that have really helped Haywood County Schools. Now, the problem is, is I did not receive this, uh, and get my hands wrapped around as quick as I should have, number one. Number two is, is we got a deadline of August the 16th. I think that it would behoove us to try to recognize some of our nonprofits and businesses in this manner. However, with the deadline, I would ask the Board if you would grant a motion that would include the ability of your Chair and your Superintendent and your Haywood County Schools' Foundation Director to nominate worthy candidates, uh, for that honor, because it has to be passed by this full Board. So, I'm asking, kind of as a... Kind of around the back way of getting this done on a timely basis, uh, 'cause I... We will not be meeting prior to the deadline again. I've talked a little bit with Ms. Wood and Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte about this, uh, resolution. Basically, what you would do is you fill in the blanks. They give you a resolution here, and I'll pass this around. And what we can do, uh, while everybody's taking a chance to look at this, is we can table this until later on in the meeting, if you'd like, and then we'll come back to it. But I'd really like to have the authority to recognize a couple of people, uh, maybe up to four, um, truly outstanding folks in the community that have helped, uh, Haywood County Schools through volunteer work or through programs or through donations of different kinds. And so, be thinking about that, and then we'll come back to that here in a few minutes, if that's all right with the Board. Does anybody have an objection to that at this point in time? Okay. Then, you're gonna get me off hook, and I'm gonna put Mr. Mark Shepherd up here to talk to us a little bit about policies, and... Mr. Shepherd, do you want the same courtesy that we extended Ms. Wood on being new at this?
Yes, I would. I'm a policy rookie. And I know it's a big shoes to fill, uh, with what Mr. Fred Trantham did. He did an outstanding job for many, many years, and Jenny and I, take them both of us to...
And Jan.
To do what Fred did. But, um, I do have to present for you for the second reading for policies. A1, which is fundraising, A4, which is pupil reassignment, P1, hours of personnel, and SA8, the minimum requirements for participation in sports and extracurricular activities, and we're looking for, uh, approval on those for tonight.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the four that, uh, Mr. Shepherd just said. A1, A04, P dash 01, SA 08 for the second reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I don't remember getting any public input or anybody. Did anybody get any?
No.
Okay, okay. There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more, uh, policy to present. This is P28, which is reduction in force for classified personnel, and this is the first reading, but would... We would be, uh, requesting to waive the 30-day public input period because we really need for this, uh, policy to be in place before school gets started.
Before it gets schooled. Is the administration in support of this? Okay. Board members, then, to do that, then I'm gonna need two motions. Actually, we're gonna have to make a motion to waive the 30-day waiting period and vote on that.
Now, this is... Is this a new, brand-new policy?
No, sir. This is an existing policy that was last revised March 13th of 2012, and what we're doing is just adding a clarification. Um, if you have that policy in front of you, do you on your...
Yes.
On your screens. If you look, um, the third paragraph, "The release from employment of a non-certified employee at the end of a school year because of budget restraint or program change is not a reduction in force, and no objection or appeal may be filed on the terms of this policy." It simply tells an employee that if their job is gone because of budget restraints that were beyond the school system's control, then it's not a true reduction in force and does not warrant an appeal as such.
Okay. Are there other school systems already using this policy?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, we need a motion to, uh, first of all, suspend the rules on the 30-day...
I move that we suspend the rules on a 30-day.
On the 30-day input, okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second? Any questions or discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, P28.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make your motion that we approve P8, Reduction in Force of Classified Personnel.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve P28. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just have one question. What... What would be considered or program change? I mean, you're... I mean, you're talking about non-certified employees, which, I mean, explain the program change. Where's that wording come in?
In program change, you're probably talking about where if the state said, okay, instead of funding assistance at, you know, K1 plus one, they might reduce, you know, get rid of the one. So, you've changed the funding formula for that program.
Program.
Yeah. The state drops a program.
Mr. Chair, how long is this in effect for? I mean, is this going to be a year-to-year vote for the board? Is this just going to be...
It would, I assume it would be in place until the board modified or changed. It would be my interpretation of that.
It would be permanent.
Which it could be looked at at a different point in time, I guess.
Right. And all it does is, it really reflects current state law. It just puts it enumerated into policy.
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
And you're wanting this in place just for the simple reason schools starting? I mean, I can understand the policy. I can. I just... I mean, budget restraints. I mean, heck, we've been under a budget restraint for the last four years, and we've never had this in there. So, I mean, you're telling me that this wording and language is something that the state, we need to have in there because the state's telling us to? Or, I mean, when you're saying...
To protect us.
Well, you're protecting us. We haven't had it in there for the last four years, and we...
Well, one thing has changed, and I may be way off on the base here. I'm just guesstimating. What used to be a discretionary cut, we had the flexibility to move it. Now, it's line item by line item. The legislature's cutting line item by line item, not saying you've got to revert back. So, now, you're working on a specific group of individuals instead of a, where the superintendent would have, and the board would have latitude to move money from X program to Y program to protect individual folks. Now, you don't have that. Is that correct? I mean, to a certain degree, I know it's not the only reason, but that is a reason.
Well, and part of the reason for having it in place before school starts is kind of like upfront in informing the person, you know, you're taking this job, but these are the stipulations.
Well, I mean, we've already approved a, what school year is this? 13-14 budget. I mean, we've got everybody in place. I mean, this sort of scares me because we're putting that wording in there because you're telling me that...
This is really for states.
Yeah. I mean, you ain't looking for the state to come back and ask us for $1 million out of...
Well, we don't know.
They have it before.
Before.
All right, okay. All right, shut up. Let's go on.
All right.
No good questions?
Yeah. Being, any more discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address this again next year. I understand it's state law, but I'd like us to look at this year-to-year.
Sure.
I mean, just to make sure that it is used properly and done properly. I mean, because there is going to be a time when somebody says, well, I don't necessarily agree that this program should be cut.
Well, I think, too, one thing we would have to take a look at, make sure that that general statute 115(c)(47), it may change short session also, so it'll be automatic. We have to look at it, so... But duly noted, will note it in the minutes, that we would like to look at this on an annual basis. Any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Now, it's time for our report from our finance committee that met earlier this evening. Ms. Milner was gracious enough to be the chairperson tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet earlier, and Mr. Phillips presented all the financial reports, and everything appeared to be in order. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the financial reports as presented by Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial reports. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, also from that meeting, we want to, the finance committee would like to make a motion to approve the TIAF CREF as a vendor for the 403Bs for our system.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Milner, a second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have one more?
Yes, we have one more. The finance committee would like to make a motion to approve the TIAC CREF as a vendor to be the third-party administrator for the 503B plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Milner. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you very much. You did a great job.
Mr. Kirkpatrick for being my coach here.
It went really smooth.
I don't know why that'll ever happen again, but it's a pleasure.
Have we got the information back across, or do you want to go ahead and do the personnel list?
No, I've stopped it up over here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this board give you and who you select be within your committee the authority to nominate for the resolution for the North Carolina School Board Association.
Okay. And I'll report, I'll report back to the board soon as we decide what it is and send it out sometime before the 16th, so you can look at it on email. If you have a real big heartburn over something, we can discuss it, so... Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, is there, you said possibly up to four. Is there a limit that...
No, there's not. We could do more. I just, I didn't want us to, you know, it needs to be truly people that are outstanding.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, I envisioned five, four, five, maybe three, two.
Yeah, now, when you say people, I mean, it could be a whole business.
Well, it is business and nonprofit. It's not individuals. It's businesses and nonprofit organizations.
Right, right, so the business is...
There's two different categories.
Right, correct.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. And again, we will, through email and telephone, let everybody know. Ms. Wood and Dr. Garrett and myself, when we meet, to decide who. Hopefully, we can get this done.
And Ms. Wood can give us a report after the 16th.
I'll be happy to.
He's picking on you tonight. Now, the board would like to recognize Dr. Ann Garrett for our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have two separation from employments, and you have three employment status changes. For your approval, you have 15 employments, three employee status changes, one contracted service, and five substitutes.
This time, we entertain a motion that we approve the personnel as presented.
So, move.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Board members, don't forget that we have our call board meeting, so we can get people in place before school starts next Monday night at 6:00 p.m. Does anything else need to come before the board? If not, meeting adjourned.